Call the meeting to the order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health being held in Town Hall's october 25th, 2021. At 6pm, this meeting is being conducted in person as well as remotely using video conference zoom video tech conferencing technology. As allowed by the governor's mandate of 20th of March of 2020. Please stand for the president. We have minutes, we have plenty of this, I'm gonna forego, we'll take our guest first. Is anyone else recording? No, no seeing, not hearing, not moving on. We'll, we'll, we'll take our guest first from Zero Point Energy.
Good evening, gentlemen. Can everybody hear me okay? My name is Rory Walker. The company's name is Zero Point Energy Consultants. My partner who's on the call, his name is Chris Balla and his company is Castillo Energy. Chris is a builder of these photovoltaic solar farms and myself is the developer.
Did you repeat his company name again?
Sure, it is Castillo Energy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, gentlemen, thank you for taking the time. Quick question, in the town of Hampden, as I understand it, the planning board and ZBA provides the site plan approval and special permits approvals, is that correct? So today's meeting would just be an overview of what we're proposing to do, which if there's no big red flags, we would be able to get on properly a preliminary. Planning board and cons comm meeting. Is that something that would, that is something possible?
Yes.
To get their input on the project prior to our formal submission?
Speaking of, that's normally the procedure.
Fantastic. The first thing, may I share my screen so I can show you a few?
Yeah, we lost your video, by the way.
I, I, I can't speak to why, sir, I apologize. I'm requesting to host disable.
What's it say?
It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
I have to make you a co-host.
Before I share my screen, allow me to give a very brief overview of the project so far because there's quite a bit of work has been done before we've come before you. First and foremost with the site control, we are entering to a 40-year land lease with the owner of this property. The most important part with regard to these solar farms nowadays in the state of Massachusetts is the interconnection. So we actually applied already for the interconnection back in May of this year. Because without that, unfortunately, you just can't build these farms and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been very fortunate to solar. But we are at a point where it's restricting the grid. And so there are limited pockets where you can build solar farms now. So having this property was very important to secure that prior to doing anything else. So we have done that and we expect to be, have an impact study in hand by the end of this year.
You are now, share the screen.
Okay, fantastic. So in addition to that.
That where you're connecting, is that what that means, the interconnection?
Yes, sir. That's with the utility company in order to basically allow the electrons from the solar to be sent into the grid. And so we are, the Massachusetts is reaching a point now, sir, where their utility is just saying no. That they are just not able to take any more solar. So the fact that this project has the capacity to do it is why we are in front of you today. Without having that, there, there's no point in coming in front of you. So that's my intention is to tell you that. Hopefully you guys can see my screen, what, what you are looking at, gentlemen, is basically the outline of the property in question. The address is 530 Glendale Road. What we have done is we have hired a civil engineering firm and they have hired a good art consultant to do a wetland survey. In order to determine what is and what is not usable area on the property. And so I just want to take a second to have you guys take a look at that. Our proposed array will be for the vast majority inside the 100-foot wetland buffer. What I have up next is basically taking this into consideration, sorry, is there, are there any questions? Let me just stop right there. Are there any questions about this diagram and what it shows?
Did you say your, your installation would be inside the wetland buffer?
So the modules, just the racking and the panels, again, this is based on our understanding of the solar bylaws. As they are, were in 2019 finalized. So the array itself will be mostly inside the wetland, but wetland buffer, 100-foot buffer. There are a couple of exceptions that we'd like to talk to you about, whether or not the town would accept that. What wouldn't be is the detention basins, infiltration basins and access road. That, that would be in outside the 20-foot buffer. But that would be, that would occur inside the 100-foot buffer. There is one point where there is a crossing that per the mass DEP, I am able to displace or an applicant is able to displace. 5,000 square feet of wetlands and I believe it'll be far less than this. We're just putting a road with no wires because in order to access this second array, it'll be right here. With your permission, I'm going to go to the next slide quickly because our engineer has basically thrown, taken. This is a previous wetland survey, but where the modules will be. So I just want to go back really quickly. Inside this area is where the proposed modules, it's not 100% perfect, I apologize. This was given to us today and we had done this several, a little bit a while ago. So this just gives a basic overview of what we're trying to do, total disturbed area, 23 acres. But where the modules will be is only 15. I'm gonna full stop, are there any questions at this point?
How many panels are in this project?
I think about 17,000, that, that's gonna depend on the water, sir. So it's a give or take, the water has gone up quite a bit. What I'd love to do is if I can change my sharing. To allow to see the, I have a drone footage of the site that hopefully, are you able to see this? There should be a video playing, is that, are you able to see that? So this is a drone footage of the site as it was several months ago. The existing barn, once the drone turns to the right, this is existing, this was previously developed to some sort, I'm not sure exactly. But this is where the solar modules will be. For the vast, sorry, there's two systems, the, the larger system will be here, we'll call that array one. And once the drone rotates 180 degrees, you will be able to see roughly where the second system will be. We will have to clear some trees. But we are in this area over here. So again, that is, the hope was to provide you some sort of overview of what we intend to propose. I'm gonna leave it at that, I don't want to give you too much.
How many acres of trees you're taking now?
23 acres is, I, I want to be specific, sir, in that answer, 23 total acres of disturbed area. I would say less than 10 acres of actual tree clearing will occur. Yeah, based on the video that I just showed you, doing a picture.
I think it's good information, but I do echo what Don said before, we're, we're appreciative of the fact that you came to see us. But you've got a lot of work to do with the planning board and now it sounds like a lot of work with Conservation Commission. Have you already done a endangered species survey? It seemed like there's.
Not a survey, sir, but Oliver GIS is, is pretty fantastic and we sent an email to the Neshby. And they were able to confirm that there's no core habitat or endangered species onsite. Because that is also a deal breaker for the SMART program, you just cannot build solar on it anymore.
Who owns the property, who's gonna be the, the owner of it? And you're just a consultant, right?
Long-term owner, sir, I do not know, the owner of the property is Jonathan Guero and State Line Landscaping. He will be present at, at all the official meetings. Again, the intent of this is to gauge the town's feeling on solar, really. As I understand it, you've had four projects already. So you are all very familiar with solar and so the intent was to gauge your feeling on it. And whether or not it's something that's possible or, or not.
We have eight solar projects until.
I apologize, I was told four and I got, where am I got my information from, I'm wrong, apologies.
Is this an AC or DC project that you're planning on doing the battery storage?
A DC coupled, sir. It is a DC coupled battery storage system because again, the utility requires it for any solar system larger than 500 kilowatts.
And you've already got the interconnect agreement.
Sorry, just to clarify, we have submitted the application and we are studying it right now. And how much that will actually be to interconnect. So we, at the end of this year, we will have a formal impact study, which is followed by an interconnection service agreement.
I think that would be, be the, the main area to look into because in talking with National Grid this summer, they were putting a pause. I don't know if they're putting in a moratorium in place or anything, but you know, they were mentioning that the, the system, the grid was, was at the point of overload where it can't handle all the input. So I don't know if that would hinder this project.
100% sir. Sorry to interrupt, you, you are 100%, that's why this project is so fortunate is because we have one of those rare pockets that you can have it. Like this is the, it's going through a Wilbraham substation where there's only seven megawatts currently pending. So again, we were fortunate in finding this.
System over here for more input, is that what you're saying?
Pardon?
What do you mean by rare pockets, is there ability?
So, um, may I, may I show you another screen? This is the host capacity map for what is a national grid territory. And it is, you'll see that is, is mostly red. And so because of that, give me one second, sir. So it is my intent, I thought, can you see this website, sir? I can send you the link so you can see this all for yourself. But what people will do, or developers such as myself, they'll go to this website and they'll look at the grid and they'll see, well, what can I do? So there's a lot of blue here, but where we are in the middle of the state, it's pretty red. So what I meant, sir, the rare pocket is that this, this project, although it's now red on here, it was. Blue once we first went there in April of this year. So this is again, the proposed site, sir, and we are running. New wire all the way north to this feeder. And again, this will show you again, Wilbraham, this is our project. That is currently with the utility company being studied. Again, we can provide you with whatever documentation you need, necessary to. But we are fortunate because not everything, a lot of people are just getting, saying, no, you can't have solar anymore. But this substation is still viable, so that's kind of the gist of it.
So you got the planning board to go to Conservation Commission and all the other stuffs.
We have a lot of work to do, but ultimately, having done this for 10 years and having some really good people help me, some of these towns. Are not favorable solar anymore. And so that's really, again, because you have eight, hopefully you guys are, have had good experiences. But there are towns where we have walked in and said, they just said, like, no, you're not getting it, period of discussion. And we have walked out and so that's, we do this for every single project on every single town. We'd like to customize our package for whatever is required for each application.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming to us and giving us a little heads up on this before you go through all your permitting process. I have, I have one question for you that's intriguing me and your video on your website. You, the video has a song by Geico and the band Cold Bear.
Yes, sir.
Raging is, I couldn't make the connection between solar and.
Oh my goodness, that's my favorite artist, I apologize. That is very funny to hear that you mentioned that, there's no, there's no relation, he is my favorite artist and. Those were compilation videos of some of the systems that I have developed and that were constructed by a very, by various companies.
Is he, he's from Denmark?
He is originally from Denmark and his name is not really Kygo, that's like how he's pronounced in America. It's, I can't really say his actual name, but he is an amazing artist and.
I bring it up.
Kind of new, but it's, he's amazing.
I bring it up because three years ago, I was at a music festival in Soport, Poland and he was one of the artists. And he was playing with the band Cold Bear from Ireland, which surprised me.
I'm very jealous, sir, I'm not, I can't say any less, that's very cool that you were there, I haven't, I've yet to see him.
I have to recuse myself.
I don't have anything else, gentlemen, I sincerely thank you for your time. The only request is whenever the next planning board meeting is that is possible and Conservation Commission. We'd like to do like a little introductory meeting and just get their members, their input and what they'd like to see before we go for official NOI.
They're, they're independently, the, the planning board is independently elected from us, so you just have to contact them by calling Town Hall.
No problem.
The coach here, the conservation's on tonight as well, too, because on the video, so, I mean.
I will be reaching out. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen, I sincerely appreciate it.
Okay, minutes, September 7th, 2021, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve September 7th, 2021.
Regular minutes of September 13th, 2021.
We've got a question here.
Yeah. There's a question.
Well, from Ted.
I think it's from earlier, right?
Yeah.
Oh. It's still up there. Yeah, that's a two, 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 two cultural councils. Virginia and Joe.
We're appointing cultural council tonight as well. Reappointed, yeah.
Yeah, reappointed, we reappointed Virginia, went to Joe.
Okay, executive session of September 13th. Favor. Regular minutes of September 20th. Well, the doctor, we sent a letter to Fleming on the dog complaint.
To, to wrap up, to say it's all good now, I was thinking about that today.
So if you do that, I'll come down and sign it.
The only thing I want to add on here is the planning board part is where I liked Mark Mojer too as candidate.
Did I not put that? I thought I had yours and Don's.
I think again, we did say in addition, we all agreed.
In the end, it says that too, but.
Want to add that?
Yeah, it was just in the beginning when we were talking about Don Collins. Make a motion to approve September 20th with the addition.
Yeah, this is the executive session of the 27th. I want to hold on here because I think we should.
The second side.
Delete the editorial opinion. Next item we have is the date for the open forum on the ARPA money. Are we doing, are we doing the tax classification of 15th?
The assessors have said today that actually the chief principal assessor said 15th to 23rd. Depends on when they can get everything together. So we'll know shortly, do they have to put like a notice before him, they have to advertise for two weeks, so, so we'll just leave that open.
I'd like to suggest to make the, our forum, I'd like to do it in December. And my rationale is that we now have the water bids in hand. Could be quite a change in what we thought was the leftover ARPA money. And once we get this settled down, it makes a big change, but it could be doing, we're talking a $400,000 swing.
I'd actually like to see it after the first of the year, just holidays and stuff like that.
And I'll say not until at least December, let's put it that way, move.
So we'll just hold off.
We're gonna hold off until first of the year? Yeah, we're not under any pressure since we can spend ARPA money until 2024. We'll figure out a way to spend it before then, I'm sure.
For the check boxes.
Bids and award contract for the water project.
You should have the tie and bond report.
Right, we had a open bid opening for last Friday due to a change in a couple of the requirements. As you see the list of companies that responded, quite a bit of disparity between the numbers, 400 up to almost, up to 760. Both Peter Valinsky, the vice president, time bond and the Jen Gilbert, who was then the engineer assigned to it, reviewed. They contacted Halleck Water Contracting, who is a company, as they said in the report, has done these type of projects. Has good background, has good reports, is not somebody who just threw a bid in to try and get the thing. We did ask, Bob brought it up at the time, to, why is it so low? It could be that that person has material in stock, they have a week free in their schedule, they're trying to fill in, it's worth sharpening the pencil rather than keeping the people idle. Having the, their workers and equipment on the sideline doesn't help them. So they throw in and get a bid. A high number was a company that actually does not do this type of work. And they would have dropped out all the work and then had to pay, so that's why. If you go back to what the original estimate was, which was in the 600s, this is not out of sight. I think we're fortunate that we do have a company that has a good reputation. And it looks like it's going to save the town quite a bit of money, as we just talked about with the ARPA, we can direct those funds to something else.
Just, just note here, this tie-in bond opinion problem of construction costs, is that from their original?
And they thought about the fact that, you know, as everybody here knows, the cost of rising costs, they would have been in there for worst case.
But then their contingency.
And we've done some changes by, some of the modifications as suggested by Scenic Valley have actually helped, you know, reduce the project. Doing the work in the town right away as opposed to starting in the road as first right away, reduce the remediation needed.
I think there's also going to be some money that we could use in the district itself to make the improvements since the capacity is going double.
And that's where I think John Plaster's been helpful about the fact that this may require an upgrade to, I think we talked about the generator, the BFT control, things like that. And because they were essential to this, they are covered.
I know the, the pump house itself needs some TLC, some siding, the generator is old, needs to be serviced. There's also a concern that John and I, Plaster talked about was the storage capacity.
Potential for more storage.
More storage, because, don't correct me if I'm wrong, John, we have a 1,500 gallon tank right now?
It's a 1,500 gallon of water.
Usable. Yeah.
So I sent an email out to Jennifer tonight to just ask her a little some information. We did talk about that at the meeting, the concern, of course, that you're expanding this up to 14 households at this point. What kind of real number is going to make a difference to 14 households? You know, obviously 1,500 doesn't do much, but bumping it up to 5,000 doesn't do much either, you're almost into.
I think we're at a daily limit, 2,000 gallons pumped a day.
Right, so even if you, even the 3,000 solar size, that's barely. And you're into, we're in, on somebody else's property.
Right, I think the concern we had was when John Plaster and I were talking was in the event of a, a natural disaster, something happens and the. The pump house is down for a couple of days, can we feed the district the additional water flow?
No, no, but if you go back to the original agreement for those houses, plus the agreement for the new houses as well. The town is not responsible for that type of thing, just like Don's house, your house, my house. It is what it is, that's an act of God, we are not obligated by any agreement to go to extraordinary lengths to provide water.
We're not obligated, but it'd be nice to have the peace of mind.
It would be nice, but again, you're doing something for these 15 houses that the other 1,950 houses in town don't have.
Regardless, you know, there's, there's a little run with the bid prices.
Definitely, definitely, we're fortunate that we're going to have quite a bit more money to use on other things in town. So that being said, I'd like to offer motion to award the bid to Halleck. Again, keeping time bond is the oversight authority reporting to Bob.
Yeah, reading Time Bond's review of Halleck here, since I've worked with them in the past, right? Yes, the only question I had with Alec was some of their line items here compared to other. Bids were zero, I didn't know if there was a reason for that. You know, like this one here, water meters, $0, right, every, water meters, that's my line. Iron fittings. I guess that's across the board there. Line 24.
Line 24 temporary, by 2000 repair.
And line 25, essential savings there, and then line 26.
They might have that.
Don, second your motion.
Further discussion. On favor of awarding the bid to Halleck Water Contracting.
And when I spoke to Peter today, he said earlier, we let them know, Bob, a better chance it is to get this done this fall.
So you're going to get it done this fall?
It could be.
Public health nurse. I got a message today that Long Meadow Selectmen are scheduled to vote on the shared health service program on November the 1st. There's a lot of confidence that they will vote for it since they've seen it and have given some preliminary approval. And the system will start up on November the 2nd. We have a health director in place. We have the grant money, obviously, to pay for this. We do not have a health agent. The health agent who was offered the job and accepted it decided to back out. We do have a public health nurse. And the question for the town is whether or not we will keep the existing arrangement we have with a public health nurse who has a full-time job and can give us an average of five hours a week, which we would then have to continue funding after December 31st. Or should we make the shared public health nurse part of the arrangement for Hamden? Shared health director, health agent, and public health nurse are grant funded by the Commonwealth. We expect that the grant will last three years. So. I'm sorry?
Put it in writing that we're, you know, again, covered by the grant, you're across the town.
Yeah.
What we get coverage for versus other towns, we're all equal in the boat, stuff like that.
The towns that are part of this arrangement are Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Munson, and Hampton.
So I would, I would say thank her for her, your service to the town, but you know.
After the 31st, we're paying, we're paying for the public health nurse services now with CARESAC money. But after the 31st, that stops. And so we'd have to fund it. We wouldn't continue or we have the service without. During COVID gave us more than five, but it's a squeeze. So we would continue until December 31st.
And they'll have their assistant links at that time on the first.
Yes, oh yes. We guarantee that they'll be up and running.
Well, they're going to be up and running on November the 2nd. They're back in the market for a health agent. As it turned out, and I only found this out just a few days ago. The first individual that they offered the job to accepted and then backed out for personal reasons. And then decided to try and do the job. And they accepted him for the second time and has backed out for the second time. So we're not getting refused by two.
That was my question too.
Basically, it's one individual who wasn't able to put it together.
Jilted by the same one twice.
We're over two. But in the meantime, incidentally, when we need the services, we have Lori McCall.
All right, the motion to.
Join the entire system.
Are we signing another MOU?
We're already signing MOU, so. We're joined, yeah.
He's giving us an update.
All right, we don't need a motion to, no, to carry on with it.
Appointment to commission of disabilities. We have a commission that under the statute can have as many as 13. As you recall, we had a struggle last year to comply with the terms of the statute, which requires that the majority of those who serve be handicapped. But we did manage to get to five. And we have one more person who would like to join the commission. And she is here tonight.
And I'd like to be appointed to that commission on disabilities. I am a retired registered occupational therapist. I still hold my license in Massachusetts as an allied health professional. And I've had that since 1988. I have worked with people with all kinds of disabilities. And it's not just a question of ambulation and walking. But that's very important in this town because we, we have buildings, including this one, that are not accessible. We're very, very limited in terms of accessibility. So I think I bring something valuable, you know, to the group.
Is this position posted? Because we said it went to 13 people. How do, how do people know about this?
They really, we haven't, we haven't posted it lately. We did post it for quite a while. In fact, we were denied a grant last year because we couldn't fill out the commission. But Lisa just stepped forward and said, I'd like to volunteer to be appointed.
That's how it happened. Who's in over the oversight? Who's in charge? Is there a chair or is there?
We have a disabilities commission, so-called, and the person who manages that is the ADA coordinator. Becky Moriarty, I think she's, I think she just signed in here. Are you here, Becky? Yes, she is.
I am.
She's the ADA coordinator and she would, she chairs the commission. And we're meeting on Wednesday.
And just real quick, Becky, you sign off on this candidate?
Yeah, I sure do.
How many currently ready right now?
I believe there's five, including myself.
Make a motion to appoint Lisa Sternberg to commission on disabilities. For a term, was it three-year term? I got the spreadsheet Bob made.
I got the share, I could share that. I had it up for the cultural council.
I'll second that motion.
Here it is. Those are the current members.
All in favor? All right, congratulations.
Thanks, Lisa. Can we also get that on our website too, if we're looking for more, more help? We posted on boards and openings, position.
Yes. We, we're doing some last minute changes to make sure that everyone on this very extensive list is on a current term. And that should take less than a week. And I just said to Pam this afternoon that what we ought to do next week is that if we find any, any people on expired terms, bring them in, get them reappointed. And then we're not only going to put it on the website, we're going to print it. So. And this is what, this is what we want to, we want to do. I, I have two, I have two forms. This one is, just gives you the board, the name of the individual, whether or not they're elected or appointed, the term. And also when the term ends, we have another version, which will not be made public, where we have the residential address of, of the member.
Do we have a term shown for stormwater? Because I did ask that group if they would like to be reappointed and the response was.
Well, for instance, we looked at the minutes.
Here's the stormwater group. They're all 21s.
Well, no, I mean, because we're working on.
They're all 21s.
So what, they're all, yeah, they're all 21.
And I thought Andrew was the new chair, right?
Yeah, we were talking today whether we should just go ahead and reappoint or whether we should ask them first. It's probably not a good idea to ask them first.
Well, that's when they ask. What the term is.
Well, we have three-year, we have three-year terms listed.
Health insurance premium split, what are we going to do on that?
Still waiting for numbers from Dick or not. Were we also going to prepare a letter to go out to all town participants, so they know what our status was first of the year?
We did, we signed that, right?
That went out.
Well, Dick sent us an email and he wants us to.
Six messages in your packet.
He needs documentation. I'm not sure what form that would take, maybe a vote to change the employee manual. Okay, well, and the employee manual, it says nothing about percentages.
It's 50%, I think.
It says 50. So we could, we could vote to change that at a future selectmen's meeting. I saw.
Oh, I see. Okay, I can really tell. Okay, all right. I got it.
You got it?
Page 26.
You got it?
Yeah.
I think the other question, which is, we really didn't discuss, was the retiree contribution. I don't know if we have rejected number from the treasurer per se.
They pay the same as.
It is, it's the same.
Right. And you've got back to it, it said right now, the current policy is that if you hit retirement, you're obligated to do Medicare first. And then the town policy is the supplemental policy, right?
65 regardless. And if you're still working, you're on the active plan. But Johnny, that is now one to be retired. So Plan Part B, and he'll be on the supplemental.
Until 2011, town meeting had to adopt the mandatory 65, switch over. In 2011, the legislature changed the law and they mandated on every community.
In addition, you don't sign up when you're 65. You don't sign up when you're 65. You're penalized if you sign up later.
He also needs an effective date here too, right?
With January 1st.
January 1st would be 60%. Then July 1, go the next notch. And then July 1 of '23, you'd go to the third notch.
But he has to understand that the January 1st is, the deductions start coming out on January 1st. Because they pay in advance.
He's asking for the decision by November the 15th so we can set things up.
He says the retiree open enrollment period is all for November.
Well, I think we crossed the rubicon already. So I think we just told him, yes, it's, it's a done deal.
Yeah, he wants, he wants, he wants some kind of, he wants a vote.
Now make a motion that we adopt a change in contribution for active employees and retirees of 60% beginning on July, sorry, January 1st, 2022, extending to June 30th, 2022.
Do you want to do a step or are you just going to leave it there?
All in favor?
So are you going to revisit that every year?
Until we get to 75.
Cultural council appointments. What we got here? We got two, two people with cultures.
It was just reappointing Pamela, Courtney, and Barbara Quinn. So tell us about your experience.
Well, I'll tell you, it was very exciting the other day when I was leaving and there were a couple of guys setting up a program for, I asked age group, thinking maybe I could go. But it was a bubble making machine and with music and all these kids by the time I left. What's that?
That was Friday, yeah. They were doing something outside.
I don't know, nonetheless. It's very rewarding because you get to spend money on the arts and people. I mean, you get a lot of applicants and it's fun. And that's my experience.
How often do you guys have meetings? How often do you guys have meetings?
Oh, we meet maybe four times.
Quarterly?
No, four times.
Four times a year?
It just twists the end when.
Oh, just at the very end.
Is the state really kicking much in?
What's that?
Is the state really kicking much in? Because it's been up and down.
5,000. And if we don't spend it all, we can keep it. And but for the most part, I mean, there's a lot of stuff at the senior center. Library does a ton of stuff and the schools used to, but I don't know who was in charge of doing it. But they're kind of lax and I reminded them the time.
And you've helped the local theater groups as well in the past.
And the Hill towns, obviously, yes.
Not that there's, of course, I couldn't use some culture, but you want to add, done? We could use some culture. Now, I'll take, I'll make a motion to reappoint Pam and Holly to three-year terms, expiring in 2024.
Holly or Barbara? Barbara, Barbara Quinn?
Holly Tunnell's already on. Who dropped off for Joey to replace? Diane?
Diane had to drop off, but she's, she's, she's staying in.
Evaluations.
I had sent the board an update, a message yesterday with some thoughts and options.
So the concern is that, the concern is that in the, in the, in the manual, the employee manual, it says that they're supposed to do annual evaluations.
Yes.
The concern is that some of these board, independently elected boards and commissions and stuff like that don't do that, won't do that, or reluctant to do that.
Although, I don't want to be pessimistic. I think the tilt was that the board of selectmen can make the request and use your persuasion to convince independently. And use your persuasion to convince independently elected boards to do it.
And, and, and I don't like the form, by the way.
You know, which one don't you like?
The second one, the one for the employees.
The small one, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah.
See, I understand the situation with the boards and how they work and all this stuff, so, but I think they could at least have some kind of goals, requires some kind of goals, like for instance, all, you know, our goal is to have all our minutes posted within a year, the six months of the, you know, six months, right? That the, the administrative assistant or clerk is going to learn how to use the Zoom, so they can do all the, it's a goal, you know?
We have the technology, it doesn't cost anymore. Every board could, could actually conduct their meetings using that technology and record.
You know, because, because it I think part of it is if we're going to do the council thing and go like that, is they need to participate in some kind of structure, you know? Other than that, they can go to the town. No, I understand, like the town clerk and the, and the town treasurer, they're independent, like the people, so they, you know, they're not going to be evaluated, the voters evaluate, you know? But they could evaluate their staff or at least come up with some recommendations and things that, something to show, you know? That's my point with this. Any comments? And we should evaluate, I mean, and even in some of our contracts with, with our, with the chief of police, we're supposed to evaluate them in six months. The fire chief, I think, is supposed to do that, the building kind of.
I think if your comment, Don, being the only person on the board before, besides you on the school committee, we used to have yearly meetings with Judy Jackson back in the day, same thing except for all.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the type of thing, but having a meeting, okay, first of the year, first of the election year, when you vote the new chair, okay, what are the goals? And I think it's, it's a good idea for boards, especially if they change membership, it brings them into what goes on as well. You know, it's a tremendous deficiency in the water commissioners board and the goals they set, both of them. But I think perhaps with Bob's leadership and sharing some forms to them, it will help everybody.
I agree with Don on the second form, it's, it needs a little more work.
Yeah.
Point of direction.
Point of direction, that's. Improve the service, so.
That's my only point.
I think it's, it's a good idea perhaps for the ones that we work with to, you know, bring them in. I think it's something you've been doing, let's bring our, our people in as well on a periodic basis, and how's it going? What do you need for help and what do we see we could do to help you as well?
All right, so we're going to pursue that. And then, and we'll just at least have something for.
Keep the dialogue.
Yeah, department, how did we do that? Conservation restriction, where's the story on that?
So basically, the town has voted that board of selectmen can set up a conservation restriction either with the land trust or the conservation commission. I know that Steve McDonald from Amara Estco had a conversation with Judy Brewer, which she'll bring back to our board. And again, they want to ease their concerns about what does this mean in terms of what they do. Their concern, my understanding is how much oversight is required of us, is this too onerous for us to do? And we're all one town, we need to work together. I don't mean to speak for Judy, she's not here. But it's a process and they're going to start working with, with Bob as well and present a solution for the board.
Okay. I don't understand what the problem is. If the, if the town had the land before and.
Town has the land now.
I agree with you.
Town has the land now.
Right.
And no one's done anything with the land, I would imagine if it's conservation land, no one's going to do anything with the land.
Right. I agree with you, but let Steve and Bob flush that out and tell any concerns they might have.
Doesn't the land trust require a buy-in of some sort for conservation funds?
Well, though, they're, what they had responded back was that they're aware, there's some legal fees. I think we all saw that in the Westbrook.
Oh, you mean the trip, so.
In terms of that, so they were concerned that they were going to be given this, pretty much just a bill as well. So they did request that if it goes to the land trust, would be applicant, i.e. Amara Estco, cover their bills, they agreed to.
Okay, but what if it went to the conservation commission? Why would we even have to transfer it to conservation commission?
We have recorded.
Well, it's our land anyhow.
We still have the order.
Yeah, but that would be a.
It can be huge money.
Can't the conservation commission just put the restriction on the town of land because they're a town body?
Again, this goes back to, it has to be, it's, it's a legalistic exercise, if you will, but it gets transferred to their control, even though it still remains town land.
Why to their control though? They're the one just setting a restriction on something, right?
You have to go back to MGL.
Well, you accept the restriction.
We accept the restriction and convey.
Right.
Go back to MGL, it's a thing.
Yeah.
They just don't want us to over, overthink this, you know?
I didn't think we were, so, again, you know, we have some volunteers in the conservation commission. We want to make sure their, their concerns are met properly and move this ahead. So I would encourage Bob to.
That's the direction, I will, I will meet with them.
And maybe bring, even bring Rose into it, so she expresses to them, look, don't worry, you guys aren't going to be on hold for anything. I think they have a meeting this, not this week, but the following, perhaps it can be added to the agenda for that. Not a decision per se, but at least informative.
And is, and is the, the delay in this holding up the project, Amara Estco's project?
So just more information is needed.
Right.
Selectment reports.
We have a housing authority meeting this week on, sorry, COA is a couple weeks from now, I think, and then just I think Craig and I, Don were relieved we only have one meeting last week.
So.
When, or right?
This Wednesday night.
Is that all you got?
That's it.
So, it's all right. I got, I got lists of stuff here. Tomorrow, library is holding their Halloween trick-or-treat at 11:00 AM. Was going to be outside, now we're doing it indoors. About 15 kids have registered and townhouse employees are going to be in, who, who's giving out candy to the kids? You know, it's distance apart. On Saturday. Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was envisioning. 12 angry man over there. Yeah. Coming dressed up as a 12 man. On Saturday, we held a trash retreats cleanup, where we exchanged treat bags donated by McNamara. Trash was collected from Rec Park and Main Street and about a dozen residents came in, the police helped out as well. So that was pretty cool. And then.
I have to say, the shirt that Craig designed was a little flashier than the one I'm familiar with handing out in the past. I did grab one to join my collection, but you really, although I thought Don was going to take over the one in the spring, but it's not. I'm really going to step up my game for my spring shirt.
You know, a contact your t-shirts.
Then on Monday, November 1st, at TWV, and November 8th, at Minutewalk, there's going to be consultants from the Mars Association, who are going to hold a community discussion hearing and open to all residents, participants, families, just to share their views on strengths, challenges, and ideas for the district's plan moving forward.
And that in terms of, in terms of notifying the public, we have lawn signs, we have lawn sign, we have flyers, electronic billboard.
Yeah.
Reverse, reverse call.
Yeah.
And.
On, on the topic of that, those are Mondays, and I didn't know if maybe we could postpone our meeting a day. Those are at 6:00 to 7:30, both on Mondays, the first and the eighth. So I don't know if maybe we can meet on Tuesday those weeks, so I can attend those. Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can work with us.
Tuesday.
Well, let's look at the, the agenda going forward. Now, perhaps, you know, we could do, skip the two Mondays, do the Wednesday in between and just, because you have a tax thing on the 15th, so we really don't have a lot.
Yeah.
Maybe we just skip the first, do like the ninth or something.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Administrator report.
We've been over some of this before, but most of my time has been focused on the special town meeting. I did the motions and the summaries. Also, working with other selectmen and town administrators. We published an article in Commonwealth Magazine having to do with the issues with the Hampden County Retirement Board. The third one, you can see there that I think we need to come up with a better process for projecting board meetings on Zoom. I'm the de facto guy now for the planning board, which, you know, is fine, but I think over time, we're going to have to change that somehow. We do have a student, but the student is not always available because she has school things that she has to do, so.
Well, I don't want to be, whatever, there's to be Craig and I both subbed in for a couple of meetings there, but at least their meetings run Zoom.
Yes.
You go to many of the other boards.
So that, those are goals.
There's a goal.
Is that something Bob, we could leverage with the high school and maybe their AV, their AV program, maybe the.
Oh.
Well, I did ask him to call them again and see if there's another Molly.
And the other one doesn't have a license.
Well, maybe we can work on that enrollment then.
Maybe, here, let's go back to, no, no.
I think, I think one solution is to have another training for staff persons for the various boards and committees. Have them be capable of doing.
Be the tech person? We'd use the tech, right-time tech person.
No, 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 have each staff person or each board and committee be able to do the basics. I mean, I can continue to set up the meetings, that's not a, that's a five-minute thing to post, to set up a meeting on Zoom and to post it on the website. That's easy. But boards and committees meet at different times, and I think it might not work well to have a student, have another student. I like, I guess we, we could try that, but ultimately, I think the staff people, I should have another training for staff people.
Well, I think the tax workout person might be an idea as well.
That's another idea.
The other thing is concurrent meetings. We have seen that in the past couple of months. And right now, we're using your account, but I do think we have to look at getting a second account so we can have.
Yes.
You know.
Actually, I just, in the hurry that we, we faced last March, I signed it up under my name, but it's the town account. I mean, it's, it's, I can, we can change the name, and we should change the name to the town of Hampden's account. We do have a second pro account with the conservation commission.
Oh, okay.
Also, the assessors are now set up with a pro account, so. And it's not, it's not a big expense either, so.
Like 15 a month or something like?
Yeah. As you know, Academy Hall has been painted. We, we did not spend $140,000. We spent $17,000, we got a $17,000 paint job.
Well, that are 50 bucks, listen, Bob and I did an inspection, we found a couple of things that we weren't happy with.
The front door, the front door has to be painted, yes.
And, and I got in touch with Sean today to let him know that.
Yes.
Contacted him.
Yeah.
Was that the only thing?
The most apparent thing, unfortunately, even with the rain this week, since it is covered, he might be able to take care of that, since it's not out in the open.
I'm sure he'll respond.
Well, he didn't scrape all the old paint off, but it, the paint is tight. I mean, what, what they have there is.
I don't know how you scrape all the old paint off.
Right, I don't think that was part of the.
You can't, you have to sand it off.
And that's a whole nother.
That's a big process. Especially now, yeah, with lead and you've got to put up a tenting and so.
Capture everything.
Very expensive.
Well, it's raining, so we'll see.
Okay, I did mention that the Disabilities Commission is going to meet on the 27th. You're aware of the training that we're going to be talking about in the executive session. I'm going to encourage the Disabilities Commission also to participate in the training, since that will be part of their responsibility. The police chief did attend to the debris problem at the Marcus site today. As I said, the assessors are focusing on November the 15th to the 20, 23rd for the classification hearing. Met the new highway employee, Tim Shannon, today. And I mentioned earlier that Long Meadow is expected to ratify and be the last community to ratify the shared health services agreement on November the 1st, and the program will start up on the 2nd. That is the report.
Yes, when you were talking about rescheduling the selectmen's meeting, the capital planning committee has a meeting on Tuesday, November 9th, 6 o'clock.
All right, we'll work it out.
Done the calendar.
Thank you for using the calendar. Thank you for using the calendar.
Second Tuesday.
Did Rose attending, is she coming?
She is coming, I told her 7:12.
7:07.
7:07. No, physical.
Make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of. Different thing where, I don't know what litigation.
The threat of litigation.
Strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of a body, and the chair so declares, without return to open session.
I want to close off.